We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council for our City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, October the 3rd at 2024. I will call this meeting to order and ask for Pastor JP of Kingdom Builders Ministry to come forward with our invocation. Is he not here? Okay. All right. Do we have a volunteer city manager? Always be ready to pray. Thank you Attorney Fowler. We'll have Attorney Fowler to do our invocation and then Mayor Protem will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Father of heaven, we thank you for the privilege of serving the people of our community. Thank you for the gifts that uniquely give to each of your children. Thank you for the promise of wisdom as we interact with issues that are sometimes controversial. Give us strength of heart and mind, we pray. Thank you for these public servants. Bless our time, we pray in your name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, for leading us in the pledge and thank you Attorney Reverend Fowler for being a ram in the bush, giving us the invocation. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the city of Douglasville. This is a work session where agenda items will be presented this evening for discussion only and official action will be taken on these items next Monday at our legislative, at our voting meeting, our regular voting meeting at 6:00 PM. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item, comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. I ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level that are dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We'll go over a few protocol issues and then we'll get into the meat of the meeting. I'd like to welcome here again, only when you come to the podium, if you'd like to speak to us, only one person will be speaking out of time. Please do not applaud or react to the speakers or speak from the audience or have a personal conversation back and forth with someone when you're at the podium. Just address all of your concerns to us, to myself and council members. I'll remind you that we're only here or required to accept public comments during the public hearings and if you have any printed materials, if you would give those materials to our assistant city clerk, we will, she will make copies for us and disseminate that information. This is not a question and answer format or debate. We're here to hear the information, deliberate and make our decisions. Now, this is how the agenda will be handled this evening. The committee chairperson, Marie, the agenda item. Then that person or applicant will come forward, make your presentations to myself and council members. We will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us to be able to make a determination on next Monday's voting meeting. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience if it is a public hearing. There's a maximum of 20 minutes for each side, 20 minutes for those in favor of the item, 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. Prior to coming to the podium, please fill out a speaker card and hand that speaker card to Ms. Candace, our assistant city clerk. She will make, put that information in the record. When you come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record and then you have five minutes to talk to us about any business germane to the city of Douglasville. Each person has one opportunity to speak and I believe that's it. If you have a phone or electronic device, please put it in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. That's a whole lot of information. Hopefully, we're all on the same page. We do have printed agendas if you'd like to have old school paper agenda, they're outside on the desk. If not, you can follow us on the screen above my head. So now we will move on with the agenda as it is presented and we'll move to the first committee after the presentations, which is item number five, Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Protem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you so, so much, Mr. Mayor Protem. We'll move on to item number six, Finance Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item tonight under Finance.
Yes, sir.
Item A, authorize the expenditures of travel expenses for Mayor Rochelle Robinson, Mayor Protem Terry Miller, Councilman Howard Estes, Councilwoman Nicole Miller and Councilman Sam Davis to attend the International City County Management Association Annual Convention for the purposes of attending the swearing in ceremony for Ms. Chelsea Jackson, Deputy City Manager, to the International City County Management Association Board of Directors and Ms. Hampton will handle this.
Okay.
Yes, sir. First, I want to apologize for having this expenditure on your agenda following the trip. A couple of things, of course, this is not something that we've done before. The ICMA conference is typically a conference for city managers. So in order for us to provide allowances for the council members who were able to attend, they had to create special codes for you all to come. So not up until a few weeks before you traveled were we able to get the amount. The other is, I know we wanted to create a surprise for Ms. Jackson, so hence why you have the item after the trip is approved. I know we did give consensus several months ago, once we knew she would be nominated for you all to support, but we do have the money in the budget. It will be taken from your line item that was proposed for your strategic planning trip this fall to Huntsville. I think based on you all's schedule, we know we're probably not going to make that trip. But that budget line item was approximately about $15,000 and that would substantially cover where this would come out of. So again, moving forward, of course, anything, I don't suspect that we'll ever have a situation like this again. This was one of those rare occasions. And just to remind everyone, the International City County Managers Association is a international association and a board of directors for all city and county managers in the continental United States and internationally. And Chelsea Jackson, your deputy city manager, is now on that board representing the entire southeast and the southeast includes, she'll correct me if I'm wrong, Alabama, Mississippi, Tennessee, South Carolina, North Carolina, Georgia, Virginia and Florida. Did I miss anyone? That's who she represents on behalf of city managers, including the city of Douglasville.
Thank you, City Manager. First, before we take any comments from Mayor and Council, Ms. Jackson, I'd just like to say personally, I didn't get a chance to speak to you down the hall, but what it is, what an honor it is to have you on our staff here at the city of Douglasville and just appreciate everything that you do, how much you've grown. I mean, you came on about the same time I did and you just, it's unbelievable, but you've done a great job. But as to this item, since we've all already shook hands and said nice things to Ms. Jackson, as far as this item, does anybody have any comments?
That's your, your nice way of saying, don't start filibustering.
Yeah.
We just say congratulations.
We need to get on with the business here, but anybody have any comments? Nope. All right. If there are no comments, I'd like to request that this item be placed on the consent agenda for Monday.
It doesn't look like we have any opposition.
Madam Mayor, that's, that's all I have tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I did have a question for the city manager. So City Manager, I know that we were budgeted to do our strategic visit to Huntsville, so we'll do that at another time. I know that's the fastest growing city in the United States and so that's why we were going there, as we try to do every year, go to a city to gain information to help us continue to build our own community. So we will, we have one with the chamber coming up, but our own personal one that will not be inclusive of the county, but the city, we will do that next year. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. My plan is that as we get toward the end of the year, potentially at your planning retreat in January, have some discussions around what direction you all want to go in specifically in going to Huntsville, some of the things you wanted to look at was housing.
Housing.
And then, of course, City Hall, that may still be of interest. I know, Mayor, we took the trip to Fayetteville.
Yes.
There's another trip that's on your calendar to go to College Park to look at some housing. I know that that's a big conversation. So what staff would need is direction, whether it be Huntsville or any other location, what are some of the projects that you all are going to be interested in in the next three to five years and what cities are you wanting to, to look at to see, you know, to get some examples of for us to move forward to. So the money will still be in this fiscal year's budget, there'll be some remaining, but we'll definitely need to have a discussion around targeted, a targeted visit. What are those interests that you all have in calendar year 2025 and beyond?
Yes, ma'am. And I still, still on my calendar to attend, to go to Huntsville, so I will, on my personal time and money, go to Huntsville, meet with the mayor, go downtown, see Black Lounge and all the things they've done in that area with housing and their mix of their downtown and retail development because it's, it's a, like I said, it's the fastest growing city in the United States. So I've already made connections with the mayor, so I'll go ahead and make the trip and come back and report, but it will not be on the city's expense, it'll be my own. So that's all I had. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize. All right. So if that's all we have in that committee, we'll move on to item seven, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business in the Housing and Community Affairs Committee this evening.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Protem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Protem. Personnel and Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
The Personnel and Organization also has no business this evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. We'll move on then to item number 10, which is Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
We do have a couple of items this evening.
Yes, ma'am.
Our first item is item 24-269.
Mm-hmm.
That is tabled from August 19th, 2024. Says to hold a public hearing and consider requests for change in zoning from R2, single family residential detached, to R3, single family residential detached for 33.26 acres located at the intersection of Campbellton Street and I-20 and Land Lot 22, District 1, Section 5, parcel IDs C014, C015, C016, C018, C076, C077, C088, C089 and Land Lot 23, District 1, Section 5, parcel ID 0024, application by Trayton Homes. And Ms. Sheila Reed is down here to go over this item with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Sheila Reed, Community Development Director, 6695 Tray Street. You may recall that this item came before you all back in August. They were requesting to have the property zoned from R2 to R5. However, they withdrew that application and decided to make it R2 to R3. During that discussion, there was a lot of questions about traffic and transportation concerns and that item was tabled to allow for the applicant to have a conversation with Douglas County's transportation team. You see that we received a memo from the applicant on yesterday, we've included that in your packet, where the county has shared what they're going to do versus what they expect the applicant to do for the property. The applicant is present for any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler, would you like to come down and go over this with us?
Joe Fowler, Post Office Box 49 in Douglasville. This is Mr. Louis Pride, who's here on behalf of Trayton. Thank you for seeing us again after the August meeting. It all began with what we thought would be an appropriate rezoning under R5. It required a change to the ordinance so that the houses didn't have to have the alleyways in the back. The council decided to require that 60% of the homes that we're seeking R5 still had to be on the alleyways in the rear. Given the nature of this site, it was impossible to develop it that way. And so we moved to R3, which is what you have before you. The site plan is probably on your computers before you. It has been revised, 58 total lots. The significant thing that was dealt with from a planning perspective was what's going to happen with the intersection of Elizabeth Drive and the subdivision. And as you know, we've provided coming out of the subdivision, no left turns onto Elizabeth Drive. And then coming out of the subdivision and turning right onto Elizabeth Drive, there'll be added two lanes. This was all reviewed by the DOT and I believe you probably have the report to you. And interestingly as well, we provided that to Frank Nguyen, Mark Adams and Danny Blue, so they have seen that as well. That meeting was conducted not so long ago with Bruce Mercer, with the county DOT. He provided the report and he outlined on that essentially what was going to be required. What is maintained is what we had proposed earlier and that is the addition of the two lanes off of Elizabeth Drive. So come out of the subdivision, have to turn right, there'd be a mandatory left toward town, a mandatory straight and a mandatory right, that is to get the traffic out so that it will not block up. If there are traffic coming out, it may be backed up inside the subdivision. Also between lots 12 and 13 that you see on the modified site plan, you'll see that there is that exit only out of that location. Trayton Homes, as I had said earlier, will be building the homes and as was discussed in our previous meetings, the appropriate fencing and shrubbery that was a concern of those who live along Allison Court in Crowley Heights, those fenceings and shrubbery will be maintained along all the houses that front along the side or rear, on the houses that front on the east or south side of Allison Court. So when you look at our site plan, you see the houses that back to Allison Court or the houses that are on Allison Court, all of those will have fencing and/or shrubbery. As before, the mandatory HOA, the covenants will be a cap on the number of homes that may be rentals, sidewalks, both sides of the road, street lights everywhere. All the utilities are underground. The homes will be served by the Water and Sewer Service provided by WSA and the project will have to comply with all stormwater and sanitation control requirements. 10 acres of open space in the subdivision, a portion of which will contain the mandatory stormwater pond. We've been working on this since last December. We hope we're reaching the end. We have a buyer who is prepared to make the transfer to us. We hope if we can't get this zoning, I think it's going to remain on the market and at that point, it probably would come in under R2, but at that point, it probably would be constructed under the city minimums without some of the things that we might be able, that we will do as we're committed to under the presentation that I've provided. So that's it. Again, everyone, unless you have questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. If you could just help me with a memo to understand it a little better, is my understanding that the county has agreed to maintain the, the light there at the intersection?
Yes, ma'am. We will coordinate what is required to do with respect to the DOT. You see that summarized in paragraph numbered five. Reading it to me was a little like reading French, but I get the idea that it's signalization coordinated with the DOT Traffic Operations Division. What they indicated is very minor timing adjustments may be made by Douglas County DOT Operations Division. Any requirements exceeding their staff will be the responsibility of the developer. I guess that's what you're talking about.
Yes. And I think it was the, I would like to see that more detailed so that we have a better understanding of exactly what any other traffic needs might be. Did they give you?
I can speak to, no, it was not addressed. Sorry.
No, no, it's okay. Did they give you any other lists of what those things could be?
No, ma'am. This was all we got from Mr. Mercer and this was done on September the 25th. And of course, we were last chair on August the 15th.
Right.
So it was submitted by Hughes Ray early. They saw the site plan and we said, please tell us what may be required. But obviously, there'll have to be a dedicated left, a straight and a dedicated right.
Well, and I'm glad that that part's laid out, but I'm concerned with the, any other additional traffic needs that we might need, being so open to interpretation. I definitely would want to have a better understanding of exactly what those could end up being so that it's, because I would want it placed in the conditions before we go any further.
Well, I can get back with Mr. Aaron McCullough, who was our coordination with the DOT, and see if we can flesh that out between now and Monday.
Okay. Yeah. And really, the sooner the better so that we would have time to evaluate that. But if you could please communicate that with Ms. Sheila Reed so that way she'll have it, her and I and Councilman Watts have had a discussion as far as, you know, just explaining it to us so that we can get everything laid out exactly the way that we would need to in order to move forward. So that would, we would have to have that to move forward, I feel like.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Or for me, at least for my comfortability. I don't know about the rest of you guys on the, on the traffic part, if anybody wants to weigh in.
Some of it was technical. The lanes have to be 12 feet in width. The pavement markings must be thermoplastic. There has to be a radius of a certain distance for Elizabeth and Hamilton. Those things seem to be pretty developmentally routine.
Mm-hmm.
The traffic signal pole, pedestrian poles and so forth would be our responsibility and of course, we understand that.
Right.
Maybe number seven, Mrs. Miller, is connected to number five about the traffic operations must review the signal plans and provide inspection to signal modifications, those relate together. But I'll check with Mr. McCullough, find out what he can find out from the city.
Thank you.
And I'll speak with Sheila.
Okay. Perfect.
I'll do that first thing in the morning.
Okay. Did you have something to add to that?
Well, one of the things we heard previous public hearings, some of the complaints coming from, not complaints, but concerns coming from the folks in that community was getting out now with just the one lane. So y'all are going to be putting in, adding two lanes.
Yes, sir.
A left, a right and keep it straight.
Yes, sir.
As far as the light and the county's responsible for timing that, I mean, I got the impression from the folks in that community that there was already an issue with that light as far as people being able to get out because of the timing. So I'm hoping that they're aware that it's already a problem for the folks if there's seven or eight cars, based on the description of some of the folks that came forward. And of course, they're worried about what additional traffic will do to that. Y'all are adding two lanes, so that will help. But I wonder if the county is aware that it's a problem right now and so that they need to take that into account as they do whatever they're going to do to that light.
I wasn't at the meeting, but I will certainly call Bruce Mercer and communicate the concerns that are expressed by both of you this evening. And of course, Trayton's going to have, depending on your vote, 58 buyers there who'll be interested in the same thing, together with the homeowners who are already there.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Yes, sir.
That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Council, are there any other questions on that? Okay. Mr. Fowler, then I have to ask my other question that no one else is asking and that is about the buffers. There's not much of a buffer there to protect the residents, the current residents from the new residents who will be moving in. I don't know what is feasible on a size, on a piece of lane that large, but I would really like to see more of a buffer, of like a evergreen style, something that will...
Yes, ma'am. This is slide number two before you. This is the site plan and there is, there's an east-west line where the north edge of the development adjoins the south edge of the lots in Crowley Heights and then it runs up to the north and along both of those boundaries, our north and west boundaries, there will be a fence and ample shrubbery as was described and it's actually pictured in what you have before you somewhere in one of the slides, nine, 10 or 11. It's the type of thing they've done in other communities.
Well, when I was looking at it, it looks like a fence and shrubbery and I'm asking for, you know, 15, 25 foot of a wooded buffer.
A wooden fence?
No, a buffer of trees, shrubbery, evergreen trees, something that allows the current residents to keep a piece of, I guess, what their current lifestyle is as much as possible because of course, it's going to change, but in order to protect them as much as possible. Can someone tell me what page I would see what he's referring to?
I think it's...
Because I'm sliding through.
16.
Memo page 13 to 68. Are we looking at the site plan?
There were some right here.
Page 23.
13 is not the one we're looking at.
Yep. Okay. So yes, I see the trees. I see the, the trees and fence and I see the fence and shrubbery. So I guess I'm asking for more defined, this is what we're looking for so that it doesn't end up wiggling down to, you know, like four foot or something of a buffer. Ms. Reed and I were talking about it and I said, well, you know, I want like 100 feet and she told me that was not reasonable. So I'm willing to negotiate, but something that is set in there, I would like to see something more than just a wooden fence and some shrubbery. Am I the only one that feels this way? Nobody's saying anything?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Well, are you, are you saying that, that, will y'all clear, when they develop a property like that, do they clear cut right to the edge or how, how does that work, Mr. Fowler?
May I have one of the representatives address that?
Sure.
Sure.
Hey, Louis Pride with Trayton Homes.
If you'll just give us your address for the record too, please.
Yeah, it's 40 Mount Perrin Road.
Thank you.
So my, my question is, and I think, I think what my fellow councilwoman is saying is, is how much, how many trees are left? Are y'all clear to build? Are there any trees left or y'all just clear right to the property line and then put the buffer that you're describing in these pictures in afterwards? Or are there trees that are left standing?
It really just depends on the grading plan. The site's got to balance, as you know. The whole west side, that's going to be left as is where the stream is and the stormwater management. So that whole area is going to be, it's going to stay as trees as it is now. We haven't done, we haven't gotten in fully into the grading plan yet, so we can't, I can't say with 100% confidence if we're going to be able to keep every tree on that buffer right there as is, but we have committed to putting in a fence and plenty of landscaping, which does, that does, that includes evergreens and trees of that caliber, yes.
So more specifically then, I'm referring to the homes that are on Allison Court here. I guess that's your south end of, no, that's the north end of your development then, yes. That are going to be, the, the new builds are going to be backed up to those homes that are existing on Allison Court. And I'm, I'm asking for more of a buffer there, something that, that we agree to now so that, you know, once you guys start building it and these residents only have a fence and a couple of trees, I want us to go ahead and come up with that, that amount of buffer.
You said you want to see 15 to 25?
I want to see 100, but you know, I'm, I'm going to negotiate a little bit. So currently, the homes that are there, we have some residents who now in the evening time can see the lights from the interstate. So when we start weeding those trees out, they're going to see lots of light and I understand that that's going to happen. It's part of the process, but I would like to preserve as much as we possibly can of the current charm of that neighborhood.
I understand. Yep. We, we can revisit that. I think we need to get with the engineer because like I said, the site's got to balance first thing from a grading perspective. So not every single time can we, we can't leave every single tree in a...
Right.
50-foot buffer, 30-foot buffer, whatever, but we can definitely look at revisiting that as well and also discuss like when we go back and landscape it, what particular caliber of trees we can put there. Cause there's certainly going to be very nice landscaping, fencing. I think there's already a little bit of a buffer shown in that plan as well.
A little bit, yeah.
And there's, obviously there's setbacks and whatnot as well, so we, we can certainly work on that as well, but... work on that as well. But yeah, it likely, we will have to probably grade the whole site to make it balanced. That's just, that's how development goes with a, with a rough site like this, so.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you. Counsel, may I have your hand raised? Is that your finger raised?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would strongly suggest that you visit Arbor Station. As far as leaving trees in place, stuff that they, have they submitted a landscape, will they be submitting a landscape plan as part of the, no, okay. Just, okay, there's no landscape plan required as part of that. But it would be, it would behoove you to look at how Arbor Station was landscaped and how it was graded. And it's a very topographically intense neighborhood. A substantial portion of the mature trees were left in place. And now, obviously, when they built it, they had to take into account cut and fill as well. Cut and fill can be done, you know, surgically, if you, if you do it right. So that you, you will have the opportunity. What I would suggest to you is at least try to identify prior to your grading plan, identify the, as many mature trees that you can that are worth saving. I think you can, you can find a way to grade around them, and still have, still maintain the number of properties that you're intending to. It's, it's doable. So I understand what you're saying with that.
Is Arbor Station a conservation subdivision, do you know?
I don't know if it's designated as such, but I know that they did retain a lot of mature trees when they did construction. So if you look at it, the nice thing about the, the way Arbor Station is laid out is that you, you didn't have to wait a generation to have, you know, mature trees throughout there. It didn't look like it had been, had been shaved before, when people move in. So that, that, you'll have that potential. But I would say, like I said, see how they did it there, and you have a good model to use if you can preserve as many, because you do have a lot of mature trees on that site that probably are salvageable.
We are, yeah. We're, we're also preserving that whole, that whole west side by the creek. That's 10 acres of undisturbed land is there as well.
But I think people like to live within the trees themselves. You know, that'll be, I think it'll be to your benefit, as far as the, as far as the development goes as well. So it makes it more attractive.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion so that we're not getting crossed into development plan review, since you're, you're looking for a buffer as a condition of zoning? My recommendation is that staff comes up with a recommendation for a proposed buffer that can be discussed with the applicant before we get to Monday, because I think if we start getting too far down in conversations, we're moving into development review process. So it sounds as if you desire to have a buffer. In our current zoning ordinance, we typically don't provide buffers between like uses. So you have a residential use backed up to a residential use, but you're desiring one in this case. And it sounds as if you're looking for height as well as width. So let us propose a recommendation so that we can provide that, and they can give their comments to it.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
And they seem amenable to something, so that's good.
Do it, Madam Mayor.
I said, the developer seems amenable to something in that respect, so I think that would be great to have the recommendation from staff with the developer.
Counsel, were there any other questions of the applicant? Because this is a public hearing. No, okay. Well, with that being said, I appreciate you. Let's go ahead and open that public hearing. If we have anyone here who would like to speak on this item, if you'll come on down and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Have them say for or against.
For or against, yes. Now's your time.
Frank Wynn, 8925 Orchard Drive, Douglasville. And, do I need to fill out another card?
Do we have one?
Not for tonight, but you have some previous meetings.
I think I know.
Okay. Thank you. You've all, you've asked some extremely relevant questions about some things that I, I want to talk about. I previously had sent all of y'all an email where I went and took photographs of a Trayton Homes development. It was the closest one to Douglas County, and if you'll look at it, it's pretty clear. They clear cut, and they put up a chain link fence. That's, that's their buffer, that's their style. I can't speak to the quality of the homes. I mean, they, they look nice, but one of the things that, I wasn't thinking about it when I took the photographs, but it was pretty obvious. The retention pond had a gate that didn't even have a lock on it. I, I don't know what kind of problem that is about at least blocking it off for kids in that neighborhood. That development, when I sent you the pictures, looked like it was maybe two thirds, half to two thirds completed. But I also thought it was odd, when you drive into it, talking about this buffer issue, you could see their nice sign with a chain link fence, and the next door neighbor right behind it, there was a, a brick, old brick home, just like in our neighborhood, where you have a lot of old brick homes. And that was the buffer right next to that person at the entrance to the subdivision. So it, it is a concern. It, it's going to take out a lot of, lot of trees, and, and, you know, they own the trees. And so I can, I can sympathize and understand them wanting, if they're going to develop it, wanting to take them out. But that's still going to eliminate, eliminate a buffer for the sound from I-20. It's going to create more lights from the buildings that are there. It's still an issue that should be addressed. And you have to keep that in mind, that in this particular case, they are asking you to change the zoning. If you look at, I forgot which page it is in their presentation, every surrounding property is R2. It is not R3. We keep talking about it being residential next to residential. It is not residential next to residential, especially if you look at those photographs I sent all of you. It is a type of residential next to a different type of residential. You can use the word consistent, and I pointed this out last time, but I can use the word inconsistent, because it absolutely is inconsistent with the rest of the neighborhood. There's some people that aren't here tonight that have spoken in the past, and one of them pointed out about the character of, of Douglasville, and what are you actually trying to do? Well, that's going to change the entire character. I noticed that they attached, and I may not have seen it in previous attachments, but the last two pages tell you that they're warning you, threatening you, that this is a constitutional taking of property if you don't agree with them. Well, I think the opposite is true. If you agree with them, you have now created everybody in the neighborhood having the right to go to R3, and it would be a violation of their rights, that they couldn't. A lot of us, like me, could put up to three houses. Some people could put more. I know there's two neighbors that have four, over four acres of property. And if you do this change, you have now created a totally different character of property, because you won't be able to back down. And R2 gives them the opportunity to build 40 houses. If they're building these at over 450,000, they can build $500,000 homes right there and make 20 million without any problem. I don't know what the development costs are. I'm not a developer. But it sounds, seems to me like that's a lot of money to cover the expenses here. If I get close to the end of my time, I hadn't, I had a lot more to address, and I'll save it for later if I have to. But you ask questions about the traffic, and nobody seems to pay attention to what is really the bigger issue. There are traffic problems. That's the conclusion. But the reason for the traffic problems have not been addressed. What this report that I read seems to say is that this is the city's, all the roads in there are the city's, not ours. They didn't address that issue. They addressed their issue, which are the traffic signals. And it doesn't address what I pointed out last time I was here. The State Department of Transportation has a long-range plan that is looking at rebuilding the two exit, the exit ramp off of I-20 West and the entrance ramp owned to I-20 West and, I'm sorry, the exit ramp of I-20 going, there's two different exit ramps. I'm trying to get them straight. There's two different exit ramps.
You're out of time. I'm sorry, my friend, you're out of time.
Sorry. I'll be back Monday.
All right. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Did we have anyone else that would like to speak? If so, if you'll fill out a card, come on down, give us your name and address for the record, because we don't know your name and address, Ms. Welch.
My name is Cindy Welch. I live at 3002 Concord Way, Douglasville. One of the first things that I noticed is on the agenda, nowhere did it tell us the number of homes that was going to be on there. And I think that's pretty important, and I don't know why it was left off, but I did find out there was 58. The other thing is, if you look at the site plan, why are they putting another road out onto Campbellton? That's not what you need, is another road onto Campbellton. That's just going to cause more problems. And sure, you think everybody's going to turn right. Well, I'm telling you right now, that doesn't happen, and you know why I say that. And the other thing is, why are there so many homes? I mean, why, why can't they build larger lots with nicer homes, when you see what's behind there? It's beautiful. And I don't think you need homes that are just willy-nilly. So I'll shut up now.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Ladies and gentlemen, did we have anyone else who would like to speak for or against? Thank you. If you would please state your name and address for the record, and Ms. Hampton can take your card when you're done.
My name is Mai Nguyen, 8925 Orchard Drive. I haven't filled out a card. I can finish what Frank was saying. A big concern with the traffic is a lot of cars already make U-turns in front of the entrance to Elizabeth. So you've got a car that could come, make a U-turn, and there, that doesn't seem to have been addressed, the U-turn issue. Another issue that hasn't been addressed is people, vehicles already cutting through, taking a right on Rose, cutting through Orchard, and then back out, so they can miss that stop sign at the little log cabin. So we already have vehicles cutting through on Orchard at a high speed, already high speed. I don't think it's a road that's made for as much traffic as it has now. It's already crumbling at one end. So I think there will be tons more traffic on Orchard, and, and it'll be cut through. It's already cut through. So those two issues, the U-turn, and then the cut through on Orchard, I think are huge in my mind, and I think need to be considered. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Folks, was there anyone else who would like to come down and speak for or against this item? No. All right, ladies and gentlemen, if we don't have anyone else who would like to speak, we're going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. Counsel, did you guys have anything, any other questions or comments while we're on this item? Okay.
This will look like it.
Mr. Fowler, did you have anything else to add to this?
Thank you. We'll see you Monday night. We will speak with Sheila tomorrow.
Yes, sir. We'll see you Monday night. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, friends, next item, 24-311, says to hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from R2 Single Family Residential Detached and PUD Planned Unit Development District to PUD Planned Unit Development District for 116.104 acres located on Brook Hollow Drive and Land Lot 77, District 1, Section 5, parcel ID 0014 and 50196. Got an extra number there. And Land Lot 78, District 1, Section 5, parcel ID 0151 and 0152. Ms. Sheila Reed is down here to go over this item with us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So this property is located in Ward 4. It's primarily surrounded by other residential developments. It's primarily developed to a, to a percentage. So what has happened with this particular development is that sometime back, the development started, and there was a pause in construction, and the applicant has since come to rezon the property. But they were later to find that the 2019 code placed a new restriction for PUD that require, require a four-sided brick. And so that this property can be in harmony with what's existing and currently constructed, the applicant is asking to have this parcel to have just the front, to have a percentage of brick requirement, just for the frontage, and not for the entire four sides. So if that to be the case, the applicant will be asking for that condition to be placed on this particular site that would allow for there to be a condition that exempts them from the new 2019 code, but still requires there to be at least a percentage of brick for mainly just the front. And that would be brick or stone.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
You're very welcome.
And am I understanding correctly that the HOA is in support of this?
Yes, ma'am. They have been in communication with our office.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do you guys have questions or comments of Ms. Reed?
This will look like it.
No? And is the applicant here, and would they like to speak on this item?
Yes, ma'am, they're present.
Hello, if you'll please just come down and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, City Counsel. Good evening, staff and everybody. My name is Abdul Mahdi Alhossani, and I am the owner and also the developer for this property. As Ms. Reed explained here, we are not trying to apply for any rezoning or anything. The only thing we would like to have your support with is for the facade materials. And as you can see, just to go through this quickly, quickly, okay, so it's located between I-20, Chapel Hill Road, and one road over there is about 116 acres. It's a very nice piece of land, and it's a time ran out, so we can have more people to enjoy it beside me and my family. We came in front of you back last year in February to rezon it, and the reason we asked to rezon it, back then it used to be all of it under one of the villages that's called the Estate Village. And the Estate Village, and at that time, we have about 140 lots to be approved back then. And then I already have, still own 64 lot, and have been really struggling to build on them because of the requirements. And we already started, we're already building in this 64 lot, we're building houses between 800 to 1.2 millions. But I was thinking that if I'm going to add, add another 140, then I will have over 200 lots, and it probably will take me 20 years to build a million, $800,000 home. And then the idea came actually from the president of the HOA, Orec Curry. He said, Marty, the city and the county, they are really in desperate need of having more affordable homes. Why don't you take that piece of land and, you know, develop it to be very much similar to the other villages beside it, and one I believe called the Meadows, right? And then another one called the cottages. And by doing that, then probably would be building houses in the 300, 400, instead of 800 and million dollars home. And this will help me to build them faster and sell them faster. Especially, as I explained to you earlier, I still have 64 lot. I'm having a problem selling a million dollars home. But hopefully, we'll continue to do that. Again, so we came here in front of you, and you already approved it. Thank you very much for your support. Just to add, I'm going to leave 65 acres, which is roughly 57% of the total area, to be a green, a green, a green space. So again, thanks very much for your support last year on this. But I have been struggling with, you know, with, with the new requirement. I just found out that you already approved back in 1918, I mean, 2018 and 2019, that we have to have a brick in all site. As I mentioned earlier, as you can see there, this development here is going to be in three different villages. Still, I'm going to have some of this lot in the State Section, where we're going to exceed that 25% of brick. We're going to have 100% of brick in an all site, in every site. So the one that are going to be in the State Section, we're going to continue to honor the requirement of having a brick, 100% of brick. the requirement of having a brick, 100% of brick, or stones in every side and all these four sides. But the other one that are closed, you know, to the meadows, we would like to have them to be the same thing like the meadows. As our friend, he mentioned it a few minutes ago, the large gentleman came over here, that would like to be consistent in the harmony. We don't want to have different zoning, different residential buildings. We want to be this, and we want to be that. So we are asking here to just to be consistent in the harmony of everything we have here. So these are quick things to go through, this one. That's what we are proposing to build, and the amenities we're going to have. And again, to summarize my presentation and to open the floor here for any question you might have, that the only thing we're asking to have this rezoning that we're requesting to be approved, to utilize the same facade materials that already be used so we keep the houses in harmony and consistent. And that's the only thing we're asking. And we're looking forward for your approval. And I had did this the same presentation in front of the planning commission, and they approved it 5 to 0. And when we came here a couple of weeks ago, we have a lot of people from the HOA, and they were on support. And I have here the project manager and a couple of more peoples, and I would love to express their support for our request here. Thank you very much. Any question?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, I just want to make sure. So we're just wanting to stay in a more harmony so that everything's just flowing, it's more cohesive, and you are looking to keep it with the, I believe, previous to 2019, it was like 25% brick or solid surface of some sort on the front side of the home, I believe. Okay. Counsel, do you guys have questions or comments of the applicant? No. Okay. It is a public hearing, so at this time, let's go ahead and open that public hearing. If we have anyone who would like to speak for or against this item, if you'll come down and give us your name and address for the record, please. You're okay. Take your time.
My name is Raymond Carson. Address is 5299 Brook Hollow. Most of the work is going to be done across the street from where I live, and I'm also the HOA project manager and also acting treasurer. So we have a very active HOA. We do monitor all the development workers in our area. We do criticize some of the work that they do, and we get it changed. So anything that we need done, they get it done. We've holding off on doing some of the development work, so we're ready to start doing some development in terms of the residential areas. We're looking for dog tracks. We're looking for a fountain to be replaced. We're looking for a lot of work that's going to be nice for the resident. We have six villages now, and the work that we're going to be doing is going to be on three of those developments, and we'd like to have the houses, the new homes, look consistent to what we already have.
Thank you for that.
Any questions?
No, sir. I don't think so. Thank you so much. Was there anyone else here who would like to speak for or against this item? If not, we're going to go ahead and close this public hearing. Counsel, last chance, Coach, you had something?
Just like to say that I have a lot of respect for an HOA that is very active, and they're working with the developer. There's a lot of communication back and forth, and they're on board with what the developer wants to do. I just, Ms. Reed, just real quick, clarify for me and maybe anybody else that's thick-headed like me. So right now, the zoning is 100% brick?
So it is currently 25% on all four sides.
All four sides.
Yes.
And this would just make it where they could do it on one side?
Just on the one side, in the front.
Thank you. I just need a clarification. I thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. Anyone else?
Just, very quickly, this is not, again, not the moment to bring this up, but I will. For the development plan, you might want to take a look at that straightaway street that's, I think it's called Gallatin Run on here, that may exceed our limit on dead-end streets.
Okay.
That's for the next phase, but just want to give you a heads up that you have time to deal with that.
Yes, sir.
Between now and then.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Verton. All right, guys, if that was all, then we will take this item up on Monday. Our next item is 24-336. That is to consider a request for final replat approval for the purpose of establishing the as-built locations of the townhome buildings for lots 57 through 64 and lots 159 through 164 of Laurel Wood Phase 2 for 12.018 acres at 5059 Roseford Drive and Land Lots 23 and 24, District 1, Section 5. There's no parcel ID on here. And Mr. Gordon is going to go over this item with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, James Gordon, 6695 Church Street. This is a, some additional buildings that are now, have been fully constructed in Laurel Wood. This is two buildings, and this is the as-built locations, which is similar to previous submittals that we've had in the past. I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gordon. Counsel, did you guys have any questions or comments for Mr. Gordon? Okay. I know that we had went over this earlier before the meeting. It seems that everything is going along very smoothly. So if there's not, can we place that on the consent? Yes? Okay. Well, Counsel, if you guys are okay with that, then I would love to place it on the consent. Thank you so much. Mr. Gordon, thank you so much for going over that item with us. Now, last one. That is item 24-342. Says to consider a request for final plat approval for the town green to be split, to split the combined, I'm sorry, 9.617 acres into 2.235 acre Phase 1 and a 7.382 acre of Phase 2 located on Church Street and Land Lot 16, District 1, Section 5, parcel IDs A014, A016, A018, A019, and A020. Application by Vincent Campbell. And it looks like Mr. Gordon is down here to go over this item with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening.
This item is the Town Green Amphitheater. All of these parcel ID numbers, we have so many because the back-out parcels have several very small segments that had to be combined to actually make it into a larger parcel. Once we made it into a larger parcel, then splitting away the actual amphitheater was performed.
Okay.
The amphitheater is the two acres, and the remaining parcels is seven acres.
Thank you. Counsel, do you guys have questions of Mr. Gordon? Everybody understands what, Madam Mayor?
I do have a question. Of course, we are preparing for development in that portion, so we won't, when we separate it apart, the city will not own that other seven acres plus?
We will own it until it's actually sold.
Pardon me?
We will own it until it's actually sold.
Okay, until it's actually sold. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
You are most welcome. All right. Well, if there are no other questions, are you guys okay with placing this on the consent as well? Look at that, beautiful. Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that is all that we have this evening for planning and development.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. We'll move on to item 11, Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's also chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Ma'am, and we have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you so much. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis. Thank you, Councilman Davis. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items tonight, and the first item reads as follows. It's item number 24-308. Consider a request for the alcoholic beverage license for the retail package sale of wine and malt beverages at the following establishment. Proposed license on Chivee Russia Incorporated. DBA Hop in Chevron. Location is 8279 Chicago Avenue. Proposed agent outlet is Mr. Patel. Do we have Mr. Patel in the audience today? Would you come up front? Ms. Patel, I'm sorry. If you'll please come up front. Hi, Ms. Patel.
Hello. Good evening, ma'am.
Yes, you can, yeah, bring it down a little bit. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. Did you fill out a card for your, so your name and address can be listed as the record?
My name is Tanvi Ben Patel. Address is 8279 Chicago Avenue. This is our business. We here for our business alcohol license.
Okay, great. Thank you. So this is a renewal?
We applying first time.
This is your first time applying?
Yes, the new alcohol license.
Okay. So can you tell us a little bit about how do you train your staff? And is there a type of system that you use? Can you just give us a little bit of information, please?
Sure, ma'am. I used to work in gas station more than seven years, so I have a little bit experience with that. And we have like three employees, and I work over there too, so we know about the how to sell the customers, the alcohol, more than the, we asked for the ID for more than the 21 years customers. We ask the ID, and we need an alcohol license every year, the renewal processes and everything like this.
Okay.
I'm a little bit nervous. I don't know what to do, what to say, but yeah.
So you're the Chevron, this is the one on Chicago Avenue, right next to the subdivision, not too far down from Chicago Place, am I, is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, it's near by the neighborhood, it's the neighborhood store.
Okay. So I come in there often, I've come in there often, but I didn't know this was your first time applying for your license. I thought that there was already?
They have already the old owners. We just bought this store like, yeah, the new.
It's not a transfer, just?
Yeah, so we transferred.
All right. I know that's awesome. Because you're correct. Yes, okay. All right, great. Do our mayor and counsel have any other questions before I proceed? All right. And with our police department, have there been any infractions on this location? Okay. So since you're the new owner, that's wonderful. I know sometimes in the morning, early morning or late afternoon, there may be young people hanging around the front. Have you observed that?
Yes, ma'am. We do sometime, so just we call the 911 sometime or sometime in the country. That's my employees used to doing like that way. Usually, I'm over there at the nighttime too, so I usually do too. But it's not a lot, it's a sometime, means like month, like one time, or six month, like two, three times, not a lot.
Yeah, we have a really excellent police department, so I'm glad that you do understand the 911. Do you have security cameras outside?
Yes, ma'am. We do have security cameras. We have like four security cameras outside, and we have almost like 12 inside.
Okay, great. Mayor, Counsel, do you have any questions? No infractions? All right, then, do you have any questions for us?
No, ma'am. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, so if you will come back on Monday, Monday is our voting meeting. We will make a decision on that day.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you so much. All right, our next item is authorize the city staff to apply for a 2024 Brian Grant in the amount of $18,167 from the United States Department of Justice for the Police Department. Major Stafford, it's your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Major Stafford, 2083 Fairwood Road. This is a grant that we do every year. It's usually between 18 and 20,000 dollars. This year, I think it's about 18,100. It's a, it's a non-matching grant, and we'll be using it for a motor unit and motorcycle for our traffic unit, is what we're planning on using it for this year. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great. I am very delighted that you all are still able to apply for this grant, and it's in good use. Hopefully, the grant cost will go up a little bit more without a matching still. So that's great.
It'd be nice.
Yes.
It's been pretty consistent for a lot of years.
That's right, yes. So do we have any questions, our mayor and council? All right. If not, Madam Mayor and Counsel, I'd like to place item 24-320 on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Looks good, Madam Chair.
And there are no other items under public safety. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Dr. Burdanley.
Yes, ma'am.
And Major Stafford, our visitors. We'll move on then to item 14, Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight.
Yes, sir.
Item A is consider a resolution authorizing city staff to apply for the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Grant through the Georgia Department of Natural Resources for the amount of $773,095, and authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute any and all documents associated with the application. And I was expecting Mr. Bass, but go ahead and take it away.
I'm not Mr. Bass. Shahar Thrasher, Parks and Recreation, 8578 Club Drive. So this is the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Grant. This is provided by the Georgia DNR. It is a 25% match grant. We will, we, what we have allotted is some of the work we've already did, and fees that we've already paid to be included in that match. So for instance, construction documents, volunteer hours, and things of that nature to cover a majority, a great portion of our percentage, and then the rest would be through sploshed. Any questions? And this is Phase 1, so if we're accepted, we will have to go through a second phase and process for the application.
So this grant will go mostly towards trails and things like that?
Fallow Field Park.
Fallow Field Park, and that includes the water garden that's already?
Yes, sir.
How's that coming right now?
So we're still in the phase of talking to Niagara Bottling Company. We're planning on a groundbreaking and volunteer day, which also counts as part of the match for the grant.
Okay, all right. Well, that's a sizable grant. Any questions from or comments by?
Counsel?
Tonight? All right. Well, thank you for that presentation, and I would like to place this on a consent agenda for Monday.
Looks like it's a goal.
Madam Mayor, that's all I have tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts, and thank you, Ms. Thrasher. We'll move on then to Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Last committee for council members, Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under transportation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Burdanley. Any other business to come for council members from the elected officials? Councilman Estes?
Yes, ma'am. In light of, you know, the horror stories that we're seeing from Helene, could we just make sure that all of our preparedness, plans, and everything are as up to date as possible, and make sure there's nothing that needs to be tweaked?
We can, and I can have our major discuss that, because we actually review that on a regular basis. If you don't mind, just giving a brief update on how we handle those?
Thank you.
We do have a emergency preparedness plan for the city. It doesn't just involve the police department, it involves all the departments, and we do review that plan. Part of our certification, our state certification, and we're going to become nationally certified hopefully very soon, it mandates that that's reviewed and updated and so on. So there's different phases that it involves and so on, depending on what threat we feel that's coming. So like a hurricane, for example, would be pretty much the highest level, where we'd start getting prepared and getting equipment deployed and things like that. But we certainly, I'm trying to remember when we looked at it last, when you just said that, it caught me off guard, but it wasn't long ago, because I remember having to do it. It's one of those things they, you know, drag it out, and we go, okay, let's all sit around and look at it again. But it is reviewed, sir, and it's up to date.
Okay, I figured as much. I just wanted to make sure. So thank you for the information.
Sure.
That's all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. Any other comments from council members? And to that point? And to that point, Councilman Estes, and for the body, when the hurricane started in the storm as well, and the governor created a state of emergency for the state of Georgia, then each county had an opportunity to do it as well. Madam Chair did call me. There was a meeting. Our appointee to that emergency management staff is the chief, and so Chief Sparks communicated with me throughout the day in, in conjunction with Madam Chair, the fire department and the whole, it's, it's all held at the county level, but our appointee and representative is Dr. Sparks, is Chief Sparks, our police chief. So they, of course, communicated with myself and city manager. And in that same vein, I do have information. I sent to each council member a schedule from the area manager and to the city manager, from the area manager, from Georgia Power, Mr. Trevor Quander, who sent to me today the schedule for all of the cities in the southern part of the state for power to be restored. I know Savannah, I was just now coming online today. My daughter's in school there, so I know they didn't have school since Thursday, didn't have any power. So, but he's given Statesboro, all those cities in that area. And so I sent you all that email from Mr. Quander. And for citizens, georgiapower.com is who you can call to, or go online and they'll give you the schedule for this, the, when power's coming back online and when the generators are coming. They had to go to Canada and get some generators. So Mr. Quander sent that to us, as well as the area director for Metro Atlanta's Red Cross, Ms. Tara Boudar, sent us some information and that number is eight hundred seven three three two seven six seven, which is one eight hundred Red Cross. If any of our residents or citizens need support or your family members across the state need any support, those are the two agencies that have reached out to the city. So that was that. And then we, I, last, I want to congratulate Councilmember Elena Hudson on yesterday and the council members who were able to attend, the dedication to her dear father, Mr. Scott Hudson, who was such a blessing to this community with Hudson's Hickory House BBQ. There is a sign on Veterans Memorial Highway. Before you get to Rose Avenue, on the right-hand side, it's a brown sign that was dedicated in her father's honor. And it was given by the State House and more specifically, State Representative Kimberly Alexander. We had her here as well as Representative New and Bearden, Representative Bearden, and the state representative, Senator Donzella James. So congratulations to you and your father's honor. I know you're carrying on great work. It was his birthday yesterday, so it was very fitting to have that sign posted and she is front and center, Councilmember Hudson, in the paper today. So we're just excited for that honors. Congratulations. So if we don't have any other comments from council members, I'll move on to updates from city staff.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, I apologize, Dr. Burdanley.
I would just, just ask right now, I forgot to mention, Premier Drugstore, they're collecting non-perishable items. I think they're going to travel this weekend to some of the areas to deliver items if you'd like to drop things off there.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We don't want to go past too fast. Go on through the green light. Okay, updates from city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Staff attorney, that's not the staff attorney.
Interim staff attorney.
Interim staff attorney.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Our police department, Major Stafford.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our city manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Shocking. Really? Okay, thank you. Comments from citizens and delegates? If you sustain the meeting and like to speak to us, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to us about any business that has remained to the city of Douglasville.
Cindy Welch, three zero zero two Concord Way. And I know you're tired of hearing about this as I am talking about it, but something has to be done about the driveway coming out of Kohl Shopping Center under Stewart Mill Road. Today, waiting to come up here, four cars came out and made left turns. I made the mistake of honking at one of them and she gave me the finger. And then, if that wasn't the worst, here's somebody coming off Chapel Hill Road, coming down Stewart Mill, and they decided they wanted to make a left turn into that shopping center. Something has got to be done. And I know you all had a study and I know it all's supposed to be done, but my thing is just close up the darn thing or make it a four-way stop. Because somebody is going to get hurt.
Thank you. I know we do have.
And it happens every day now. It used to be occasionally and now it's, and when you see four of them at one time come out of there and do that. And there's a sign. The sign is there. I went and made sure it was still there and it is. Obviously, they don't read English or they don't care.
Thank you so much. Any other comments from citizens? I know we do have, it's in progress now with the Transportation Department.
Yes, ma'am. The intersection is, I mean, the contract has been signed with the contractor. We're waiting on equipment that's part of the install, which includes poles that are going to be six to eight weeks. I wish that I could have a magic wand to make construction and certain things happen as quickly as everybody wants them, but we're not there yet. So rather than create another safety issue, Ms. Welch, by having a construction issue in the middle of waiting on light poles, which may create a more dangerous intersection, and I'm certain the mayor, the major wouldn't want that, we're just going to wait until everything is in order. Construction shouldn't take more than two weeks, Mr. Engineer, two weeks. So it just takes a little bit of time.
When everything gets here, it'll be done.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, may I also make a suggestion or just remind our audience and our listening audience as well? Of course, you know, the port, the port is, the strike is their strike. And you may not feel it now. Hopefully, they'll be able to resolve that soon, but non-perishable items and just medication and equipment and things like that delayed. So you probably feel it in the next two or three months, three months, but I would encourage if, you know, if you need to stock up on perishable items, make sure you check with your physician and get your medication and ask for maybe additional medicine so that you're not stuck in a pickle.
Absolutely. And, and just to, to the elected officials, to the, the point about delays, I think Council, Dr. Burdanley brings up a good point as well as on commodities, but the other delay that you all are experiencing, that we are as staff, is if you're looking for anything in the field of engineering, you may want to tack on an extra five to six months from what timeframe you are used to. That's just the reality of where we are standing right now. Some of that has to deal with the shortage of engineers in the engineering profession. So all of the companies that we were able to tap into to provide those services for us, they're struggling. So as much as, again, we would like to rush those projects, that industry and that field, we are feeling the brunt of their delays. So anything in that realm is not moving as quickly as it used to. So your staff is pushing as quickly as we can, but we really are beholden to what the engineers can provide to us.
Thank you so much, city manager, and thank you, Dr. Burdanley, and for your service in the Coast Guard. We know that you're watching for us. We really appreciate that.
Coast Guard. And our first defend, our first responders, of course, they went out. I wasn't able to go, but they know my heart's with them. Thank you, Madam Mayor.